Speaker of the Council meeting Tuesday, October 12, 2021 at 7:30 PM. Scout Colin, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
All right. Please face the American flag and say Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Here.
Terrencey.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes.
Thank you.
The rest of the items in consent business, bills payable, 2022 tax collection agreement. I would be looking for a motion to approve both of those items in consent.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Terrencey, support by Councilman Deion.
Yes, sir.
I apologize.
Counsel person.
Counsel person. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And my last item for the night, Parks and Rec Committee appointments. We have two folks that graciously requested to be appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission. One is not able to make it tonight, and the other is here, I see. In your packet, I have the emails with their request. The first candidate is Riel Alexandra Chase. She's a resident of Shelby Township. And the second is Kayla Kalas, a resident of Utica, lives right around the corner from me and have known her for many, many years. So I would be looking for a motion to approve the appointment of both Riel and Kayla Kalas.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Councilman Ryan. Any discussion?
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes.
Thank you.
The rest of the items in consent business, bills payable, 2022 tax collection agreement. I would be looking for a motion to approve both of those items in consent.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Terrencey, support by Councilman Deion.
Yes, sir.
I apologize.
Counsel person.
Counsel person. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And my last item for the night, Parks and Rec Committee appointments. We have two folks that graciously requested to be appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission. One is not able to make it tonight, and the other is here, I see. In your packet, I have the emails with their request. The first candidate is Riel Alexandra Chase. She's a resident of Shelby Township. And the second is Kayla Kalas, a resident of Utica, lives right around the corner from me and have known her for many, many years. So I would be looking for a motion to approve the appointment of both Riel and Kayla Kalas.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Councilman Ryan. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And my last item for the night, Parks and Rec Committee appointments. We have two folks that graciously requested to be appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission. One is not able to make it tonight, and the other is here, I see. In your packet, I have the emails with their request. The first candidate is Riel Alexandra Chase. She's a resident of Shelby Township. And the second is Kayla Kalas, a resident of Utica, lives right around the corner from me and have known her for many, many years. So I would be looking for a motion to approve the appointment of both Riel and Kayla Kalas.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Councilman Ryan. Any discussion?
Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes.
Thank you.
The rest of the items in consent business, bills payable, 2022 tax collection agreement. I would be looking for a motion to approve both of those items in consent.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Terrencey, support by Councilman Deion.
Yes, sir.
I apologize.
Counsel person.
Counsel person. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And my last item for the night, Parks and Rec Committee appointments. We have two folks that graciously requested to be appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission. One is not able to make it tonight, and the other is here, I see. In your packet, I have the emails with their request. The first candidate is Riel Alexandra Chase. She's a resident of Shelby Township. And the second is Kayla Kalas, a resident of Utica, lives right around the corner from me and have known her for many, many years. So I would be looking for a motion to approve the appointment of both Riel and Kayla Kalas.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Councilman Ryan. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries, thank you. On to council reports. I'll start on this side. Councilwoman Townsend.
Thank you. I just wanted to give everybody an update on the Paint the Tunnel Day. It went fantastic. There was so much great energy. Everybody had a good time. The kids had a good time. I was sorry to see that some people have already written over some of the artwork. We expected that to happen because we haven't really put out a plan and addressed things yet. We have lots of ideas being thrown around. I'm investigating them all and researching them all before I present anything. You know, there's ideas from cameras to posting signs, and then just even having people show more of a presence around the tunnel, you know, via artists, musicians. So this is an ongoing project. It's not going to be solved overnight. We know one Paint the Tunnel Day isn't going to help. But we're looking forward to doing it in the spring with the other tunnel, and by that time, we should have a plan put forth, and working together, I think all of us can do it. I think that's about it for my update on Paint the Tunnel.
Excellent. Anything else?
Oh, and if you get a chance, there is a street artist who is working in the tunnel yesterday and today, and he's doing a beautiful piece of work with Betafish and all. It's very colorful. It's very beautiful. So if you get a chance, take a walk down there and check it out.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Anything else? Councilwoman Townsend? Councilwoman Townsend?
I don't think so off the top of my head.
So, my turn?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'd like to congratulate Olivia Thompson. She's a Utica High School student who was nominated as the Homecoming Queen. As it turns out, her mom teaches at Flickinger Elementary, and her grandmother, you might remember, is Zita Burton. And back in 2017, we created the Zita Burton Day here in the city of Utica because Zita was announced as the Utica Community Schools Teacher of the Year and then shortly retired. So congratulations to our Chieftains on their victory over Warren Mott. And it was a great weekend with our DPW helping out, creating a safe path for the parade, and our police officers and firefighters participating to make sure everyone was safe, and everything worked out fantastic. So thank you, and bottom line, go Chieftains. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Deion. Mayor Protem?
Nothing.
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 Admin folks, in preparation for city council nights, do you, so I know the building closes at 4:30. What I'm thinking is we do a maybe quarterly admin meeting at the end of the day before council meetings since we're here already. What are your initial thoughts on such things?
I can be available when you need me to be.
Okay. All right, I'll reach out.
Quarterly sounds great.
Gotcha. All right, I'll reach out to Phil and shoot an email out to everybody and invite the rest of council.
Yeah.
And so that's admin. And planning commission was canceled. No items.
That's a word?
Yep, a couple different things for me. First off, for the Christmas tree lighting on December 11th, I've been coordinating with Toys for Tots. The Utica Firefighters Foundation is going to be doing a stuff and ambulance toy drive to assist with Toys for Tots. Toys for Tots, because of COVID happened, been getting a whole lot of toys and helping Utica families out. So during that event, we'll be having a Marine Corps presence and hopefully get some stuff for their organization. Also, along with that, I've been meeting with the police chief and the fire chief about once a month, about a week prior to the meeting, to try to stay abreast of everything that's happening at both departments. Considering the serious accident that we had on Van Dyke, yeah, on Hall Road at Van Dyke, and due to the numerous other excessive speeds that occur on Hall Road of people traveling in excess of 100 miles an hour, treating our roads as a glorified drag strip, it's only a matter of time before something significantly worse happens. And it's something that we need to take that into more of a forefront of taking action. Right now, the way that the laws are written, we can't impound these vehicles when they are stopped for driving these excessive speeds. Thus, they are given a civil infraction and they're sent on their way, and we're not stopping the problem. Many other jurisdictions have looked at doing excessive speed ordinances, and I think it's something that we should consider doing to help our police department stop these speeders from using our roads as their racetrack. The second issue that I've been kind of monitoring for the past couple months is a traffic issue over at Hall and Venker. A lot of traffic likes to take the Venker turnaround going from eastbound to westbound, and that turnaround allows them to turn into the subdivision. Well, they stop at the stop sign, traffic gets backed up on Hall Road, and then when they try to cut across, they're broadsided by a car doing close to 60 miles an hour. Those accidents are occurring at that intersection multiple times a day and increasing in injury. So that's something that either needs to be evaluated by the county or something that we need to take action on in changing that type of intersection.
Can I comment on two things you mentioned?
Absolutely, sir.
The excessive speed ordinance?
I'd be happy to look into that and draft something up for council's consideration.
Thank you.
I know in the district courts, because I prosecute all those cases, I've taken a hard approach on any reductions on anything that's excessive like that. About a week ago, I had a case where someone was doing 137 miles per hour.
Wow.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, the way that Macomb County is currently running those excessive speeds, they're not allowed to be charged reckless, correct? For a speed alone?
You know, I'd have to do some additional research on that.
Okay.
And I certainly can work with, you know, Sergeant Clusney and our chief and make recommendations if I find they can be charged higher than what they're being charged.
Yes.
But we're taking a very strong approach on them in court.
Okay. Because one of the things that I would like to see is give them the ability, if they are driving in excess where they're basically racing or anything that's clearly at a dangerous speed where their vehicle can be impounded at that time, that's something that is more of something that I can see as an immediate action that can stop them from doing it in the future.
I will look into the ordinance and if we have any other repercussions we can add, and I'll have a report certainly before the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Probably a lot sooner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Councilman Ryan. Any other comments from council? I would like to give you your certificate, Kayla, if that's okay? And you folks, your family is welcome to stay with you for the rest of this exciting meeting, or you can take your certificate and we'll catch up with you at the next Parks and Rec meeting. Thank you so much.
Mayor Calendino, could you have a second point on mine? You said you had two points. You only brought up one regarding my two things.
Oh, the Hall and Venker, yes. I had a meeting last week with MDOT. I still don't have all the details, but I know a long time ago, maybe a year ago, two years ago even, I think. MDOT announced that they were going to move the turnaround, which is directly after Van Dyke on Hall Road.
Eastbound.
Eastbound. So currently, as soon as you get past, when you're traveling eastbound on Hall Road, as soon as you pass Van Dyke, immediately there's that turnaround. It's quite dangerous because it fills up very quickly. Oftentimes, cars are left, you know, kind of straggling in the middle of Van Dyke, you know, heading, again, heading eastbound on Hall Road. The idea was to move that turnaround further east. I believe at Venker. We don't have all the details yet. Make it a two-lane turnaround and close that immediate turnaround off. The work is scheduled to begin sometime in the winter. The light work, they're going to get the lights all set up and bagged, and in the spring, the plan is to actually start the reconstruction work. So, you know, that may alleviate some of the issues that you mentioned at that turnaround at Venker and Hall. Anything further from council? All right, we have nothing from planning, assessing, or building tonight. So Ms. Francis, report from the library.
Nothing.
Nothing from library. Chief Wilsec and Chief Cody are both excused tonight for family issues. Councilman Ryan, do you have anything that you'd like to present from fire?
Yes, the one thing the chief wanted me to pass along, well, the two things you wanted to pass along, one thing will be covered, I believe, in Lori's portion. The other thing, the only thing that the chief wanted to mention is that the new ambulance will be here next week and due to some other stuff, we're going to receive it and then we're going to resend it back out for the graphics. The graphics are already paid for. It's just to help get it here sooner so we can start working on getting a state inspection on it.
Perfect. Is that it?
Yep.
And we do have Sergeant Clusney tonight representing police.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. Police Department does not have any agenda items on our agenda for this council meeting, but what I want to do is just update you on a couple of things that we do have going on right now. Councilman Ryan, you brought up the issue of speeding, at least on Hall Road. One of the largest concerns we have is the speeding in our residential zone. As you're familiar, we did bring out the mobilized radar control sign, and we're having really great data coming back on that. So I just want to encourage everybody to reach out to me, call a non-emergency number, send me an email, and that way I can kind of determine where our areas of concern are within the city so we can get the sign out. Just recently, the sign is at Messmore and Custer. And when I send you some of the data on the sign, you'll be astonished at some of the speeds we're getting. So based on that, I was able to get our officers and start really doing some increased enforcement out there. So just want to encourage everybody, please reach out to me, non-emergencies, so we can really get this and hone in on where our issues are. Another thing that Police Department that we're kind of excited about is we're going to be bringing in a new officer, starting hopefully within the next week or two weeks. So by next council meeting, we'll be able to bring him in and officially swear him into the city, but we're really looking forward to this. We've had the approval from the budget that we appreciate, and this officer's coming from another city. He's currently in the Military National Guard. He's got a four-year degree from Ferris State University, just really, really sharp individual. Lives in the city. He's from Utica, so we're really excited to bring this guy in. Really, really think he's going to be, you know, part of our future in moving forward. So I look forward to bringing him next council meeting in front of you and doing the official swearing day. As for that, that's all we have in the Police Department.
Thank you, Sergeant Clusney. I'd like to add that on Sunday during the Lions' weekly loss, I sat at the intersection of Custer and Messmore because I knew that's where we had the mobile radar sign. I sat there for probably 45 minutes, and I videoed with my phone every car that went through the intersection. I was amazed. I would say, I didn't do a scientific, you know, analysis of it, but I'd say 80% of the cars didn't really try at all to stop, and there were at least three cars didn't stop and were going about 40 miles an hour, or maybe even in excess of 40 miles an hour through that intersection. So, and that's on a Sunday afternoon, you know, Sunday like 1:30 or whatever it was. So having that sign's great. I know you and I have looked at some of the data, and it's roughly 80, low 80% of every car that approaches that sign slows down when they see that sign, and that's major. And the data that you're gathering is going to be very useful in, you know, helping us as a city know how to staff our police department, know how to dispatch our crew, and, you know, try to alleviate some of the speeding in the residential areas. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lane, DPW report.
Thank you, mayor and council. You should have in your packet a proposal from Hubbell, Roth, and Clark in regards to our need to meet the requirements of the Americas Water Infrastructure Act. We need to engage the engineers in developing an emergency response plan for us. It's similar to the emergency response plan that actually I did many, many years ago in regards to our Bioterrorism Act, but now the EPA is requiring a new one, which is far more in-depth and in more detail with more data that's needed to comply with the act. So I don't know if there's any questions on the proposal. Be happy to try, do my best to answer those. Pretty well laid out of what they need to do and with our assistance to meet the requirement. And they've offered a not-to-exceed number of $9,900 to complete that and get that enforced, keep us in compliance with our water system with the EPA.
What is the deliverable on this? Is it just like a manual, a report that they provide us?
So it'd be similar, so there'd be multiple different forms. Some forms are just strictly data. Others would be a roadmap that in the event, so more specifically, the earlier one that I did was to meet our Bioterrorism Act in the event of, I don't want to say domestic, but a Bioterrorism Act on our water system from outside sources, inside sources. This one is more particular to do with the latest natural disasters that are occurring, the floods, the hurricanes, just the bad weather. So it's a different type of roadmap of how we would react to that, and it goes in more detail with finances and preparedness for different types of water issues. So to answer your question, it would be a roadmap that somebody should be able to pull out of a file in the event that this disaster happened, we do this. It's kind of like a guidance material of how we would respond and the things that you could pull from to make things happen. So for instance, we keep, currently under our emergency response plan, we have all of our critical phone numbers and an algorithm of procedures on who to call, how to call, if these people aren't available, or if these tools are needed, things like that. So it would be, but it'd be much more in-depth and in detail, similar to what they described here.
And as you and I discussed, this isn't really an option. It's something we have to do.
This is unfortunately another one of those unfunded mandates that are required, yes.
Thank you. So Mr. Lane would be looking for a motion to engage Hubbell, Roth, and Clark at a cost not to exceed $9,900 for this ERP response plan.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Councilman Ryan. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Lane. Did you have anything else to?
I just want to add additionally for that same item, it's currently budgeted for under engineering in the fiscal year budget for the Water and Sewer Department. However, we're going, in addition to some other activities that we're doing, we could see ourselves needing a budget amendment later in the year if some more engineering services come up that we need to add. So currently, it's budgeted for. We don't need an amendment, but we could, you know, just FYI, if we, you know.
Yeah, we love those unfunded mandates, don't we?
That, well, that, something could happen, you know. It does rain.
Right, right, right.
Anyway, thank you very much, though. We appreciate your help and understanding with moving the processes forward.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Next on the agenda, our treasurer, Mr. Paternoster.
Good evening, mayor and council. You have in the packet an agreement from J.P. Morgan Chase Bank to finance the purchase of the previously mentioned ambulance. On your table this evening, I presented you with an updated installment purchase agreement, which includes the interest rate, and on the last page, the schedule of payments. The interest rate had not been finalized on Friday morning when the initial draft of the installment agreement had been submitted to me. So the final document has an interest rate of 2.25% per year, and that's for a tax-exempt borrowing, and the purchase price is $235,796. Installment term is 60 months, payable annually, and the annual payments will be $50,389.66 total over the five years, $251,948.30. There is included in the packet that was in your agenda, there's a resolution that the council needs to adopt this evening. That resolution authorizes Mayor Calendino and/or City Clerk Cook to execute the documents on behalf of the city, authorizes the purchase agreement in principal amount not to exceed Grants Mayor Calendino and City Clerk Cook the authorization to designate by written instrument signed by them specifically identified officers or employees of the city to execute and deliver agreements and documents relating to the purchase agreements on behalf of the city. Agrees to pay all installment payments due under the purchase agreement and to Agrees to pay all installment payments due under the purchase agreement and to levy such taxes as are permitted by applicable state law to pay all of the installment payments due, and designates the purchase agreement as a qualified tax-exempt obligation for purposes of Section 265(b) of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended. I will add that this is a, this form of borrowing is not subject to the levy of special taxes. It has to be paid for from our general operating budget. We did budget, or we, the council committed when authorizing the purchase of the ambulance to budget in each of the successive years, the debt service payments. So I would ask for a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented, sir.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Deion, support by Councilman Ryan. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. It'll be very nice to finally get this ambulance in Utica.
Yes.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Paternoster?
I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, I have an ambulance service settlement offer from Arbor Professional Solutions, proposed by Acumen patient. Their total that they owe the city is $844, which includes $82 of litigation fees. They are offering a settlement of $500. And I would be looking for a motion to either accept the $500 settlement offer, counteroffer, or decline the offer. I believe Councilman Ryan might have something to offer in addition.
So the one thing that, first Chief Willsec asked me to pass along regarding this, he said to kind of look at this like similar to how we do water bills. Once we start opening the door as far as people trying to pay on your, we're only going to cause further problems down the line when it comes to people paying their bills. Lot of our funds for ambulance service comes through these bills.
I know, I had a conversation with Chief Willsec as well. He said on this particular call, we sent four of our crew to respond to this. We sent a vehicle there, and it was a mutual aid call as well. I believe it was Sterling Heights.
It was a mutual aid to Sterling Heights for a cardiac arrest.
Right. I would just add to what Councilman Ryan said, you know, when we set precedent making these settlements, you know, we run the risk of making ourselves known as, you know, if you can't, if you don't want to pay your bill, just let it go to collections, ask for a settlement, and that's what Utica does. You know, who picks up the bill? Utica residents. So I'm really not in favor of making these types of settlement agreements.
I also talked to the chief after he gave me the details of how many people, all of that. Again, you know me and water bills. I do not want to set a precedent on just letting it be, let's make a deal after the service is rendered. So I would reject this now if we counter with an amount or just put it back out and let them do something. But I would give back the full bill and say, this is what you owe.
We have motion, and then we can open it up for discussion.
I will make a motion that we do not accept this offer of payment and that we send it back to them in the full amount due.
Support.
Discussion?
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Councilwoman Terrencey. Discussion by council?
Yes, sir. So I would agree with Mayor Protem Sikora that, and yourself, obviously. I think that maybe we could find a resolution by offering an extended time period in order for them to pay the debt rather than limiting the amount of debt recovered, perhaps extend the time period in which we'd allow them to repay us. Would that be reasonable?
To my understanding, this was already in collections, so they had an extended period already. Do we know?
It's been two years. It's been since 2019.
This incident occurred back in October of 2019.
Okay. Do you know, have they explained a hardship or anything to that fact?
I'm not aware.
Okay. Well, then I would withdraw my suggestion then.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, who actually owes the, who's the debtor, who's the debt, who's the debtee? Because, you know, there's not an individual listed here. This is a...
For privacy purposes, I had retract the patient's name.
Well, I guess, are we collecting against a collections agency or against the individual?
We use Arbor Core to help us collect unpaid debts from police and fire department.
Okay.
So, our deputy treasurer is very good, tries very hard, and once she has reached a certain point, she passes it on to them. We do lose a percentage of what they owe us once it goes to collections.
Right, right. Thank you.
Any further discussion from council? So just for clarity, the motion on the floor right now is to decline this settlement offer and send the bill back into collections. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time. Next, I have for you retention of law firm Kitsch, Druches, Wagner, Voludi, and Sherbrooke. I apologize. We have used them in the past for co-council in help with negotiating telecommunication matters. There's a cell tower located in our city, and a representative of that cell tower has been trying to renegotiate some issues with us, and we need this telecommunications lawyer to help us with this. In your packet is his rates and the note that he had given us discounted rates before and whatnot. Any other questions?
When you refer to telecommunication tower, you're referring to our radio towers for our prep radios for police and fire departments, correct?
No, I'm talking about the tower down on Cough.
Okay.
That is used by T-Mobile and Verizon.
Okay. That tower.
If I can offer additional information, the city is always used outside council for that because it's a very specialized area of the law. Previously, we used Neil Lato, who is subsequently retired and is not doing this work. And there's very few people that actually are specialized in this area, not to mention the rates like mine look really good.
So I was looking for a motion to be able to retain them for representation.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Councilwoman Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Mayor Calendino.
I'm sorry. Sorry. I apologize.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, any, anything else to present to council tonight?
I'm sorry. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Parks and Rec Commission. Lori, would you be representing Parks and Rec tonight?
I didn't know there was anything, no.
No, okay.
Talk about the scarecrow.
Yeah, our scarecrow and...
I actually...
Can you, can you go to the podium though, so the cable broadcast that we'll pick up?
Did actually show this picture.
Make sure the mic is green there.
It is. I did, I showed the picture to Councilwoman Terrencey earlier today. We made a adorable little scarecrow. Utica Parks and Rec, we submitted it for Shelby Parks and Rec for their scarecrow contest that they're doing. So we did a little female gardener. While it was supposed to be a dog, but it ended up being a bird, which is actually, and it was a skeleton bird, so it was actually really cute. So we did end up submitting that. So it's supposed to be Sherry. Where was it supposed to go to? Either one of you guys remember?
It's not at Miss Decker.
Is that where it was supposed to go?
I think it's at the municipal grounds, isn't it? Shelby Township Municipal Grounds.
Well, that's where we delivered it to, but they were going to be taking it to one of the, one of their parks.
I thought they were going to be around the corner.
Yeah, that's, yes, that is correct.
Neat. And I know it's proudly wearing a Utica Parks and Rec t-shirt.
It is. It is wearing a Utica Parks and Rec t-shirt.
Anything else, Lori? Is that it?
No, that's it.
Great. Thank you so much. Nothing from Historic District Commission tonight. Ms. McGreal, anything from our city attorney?
Nothing from legal. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. At this point, we open the floor to, for communication from the public for anything not on the agenda. If anybody would like to address council? No? All right. I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Deion, support by Mayor Protem Sikora. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes.